Okay, I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council of the City of Wildwood for Monday, April 22nd, 2016. Ms. Termlinger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Gagnani.
Here.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Manten.
Here.
Councilmember Shea. Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Boeb.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Stein. Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Garitano. Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Stein just walked in, so you can record him as here. And for those of you in the audience that are with us this evening, thank you for being here. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you please turn that to silent while we're in the meeting, we would appreciate that. Moving to informational items, I believe we have 14. Before we go to action items, is there anything under information that any member of the council would like to discuss or about which you have a question? Councilmember
On the trash contract, Rick, I believe it says monthly billing, but I think Meridian was doing quarterly billing. Do you know, does that make a difference? Is it going to be monthly/quarterly?
I believe the plan is to do quarterly billing, which is what Meridian is currently doing, to my knowledge.
Okay. All right. And then also, which I don't know if we need a motion or just a recommendation or just ask, which I talked to you about this before the meeting, but just to make sure that we do a review of waste connections early in 2021, since it is only a two-year contract with renewals after that, because I feel like we kind of got stuck with Meridian's poor service than we didn't necessarily have to. So I just want to make sure that we have that on the agenda for Admin Public Works for early in 2021 to do a full review of services to make sure that we're on par with where we need to be.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. And then one other thing for, I guess this would be for Joe, maybe, for the Better Together merger plan. Is there any plans on inviting people from Better Together to the Wildwood Preservation Committee? I know other municipalities have, but...
They've already been there. Oh, I'm sorry, Better Together.
Yes. At this stage, we've not extended an invitation to that organization. Certainly, the city could, either as a city council or the Wildwood Preservation Commission. To date, we've asked Pat Kelly, the Executive Director of the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis, to attend a Wildwood Preservation Commission meeting, which he did this past week, and we are in the process of scheduling Dr. Terry Jones to present to the same commission on the same matter.
Yeah, just to, I don't know, before we start making decisions, just to make sure that we have all the information. I think it would be fair to everyone to at least have a representative or, you know, ask for information from Better Together while the committee's making those decisions, so.
Mr. Cross and the Chair of the Wildwood Preservation Commission set the agenda. I'm certainly sure that Mr. Cross will do, will talk with Will, the Chair of the Commission, and see what they think, and then extend an invitation if it's appropriate.
Yeah. The one thing I would just add, which we discussed at the first meeting of that commission, it's not the commission's objective to get into the merits, pros and cons of a merger. It is, and I'm not saying we shouldn't have Better Together there. The sole function of that body is to look at key value assets that they identify in our city, not necessarily financial, prioritize those, and make recommendations for ways to protect them. So I mean, I personally view that as widely beyond the merits of the merger or not. Councilmember McCutcheon?
I guess, Rick, this is your question. So on no parking restrictions on Pier Side Lane, is it going to push parking into other streets in front of people's homes, or...
I think the answer to that, for the most part, it should have minimal effect, because the area on Waterside between Center Point and Pier Side is already restricted. So in theory, they shouldn't be parking there currently, and their signs up in place. The only area where that would apply would be the 250 feet on Pier Side, which was not previously excluded and is not marked for no parking. So it's possible on those high-event days that people are parking on street on Pier Side immediately east of Waterside. But I think when we talked about it at Public Safety, they felt the concern, that that was not a concern, that there's enough other areas to park on Waterside, that losing those spaces in that area would not be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I have the personal safety training. I don't know who that...
Well, if you would like, I think Mr. Williams is present. If you have any specific questions, I encouraged him to attend and be ready to address any of those.
I just have a general question. So is this going to be an ongoing training at one time?
I can offer this as a brief statement to people having interest in it.
And is it going to be a conflict, because we don't let organizations generally use our community center? So is this gonna...
I'm not an organization. I'm private.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gagnani?
Yeah, a quick question for you, for Joe, if you don't mind. This is about the Rural Internet Access Committee. I understand you're meeting at the hotel, is that correct, in this next session?
Yes, we could not find a home here at City Hall.
Are you going to have the consultant there at this time to talk to the group?
Yes, CTC Energy and Technology will be there. We had a conference call with them this past Friday, and they're going to have seven different proposals or directions or considerations. So they're quite prepared for the meeting and the discussion.
Good. I hope we come up with something useful. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McGowan?
Rick, this may be for you. First question concerns the consultant agreement regarding the three bridges on Wild Horse Creek Road or in Austin Fort. Do you have any idea at this point what the plan will be when those reach the point of actually being ready to be worked on? Will that work all take place at one time, or will you do them one at a time, or do you know?
Councilmember McGowan, those are the questions we've been asking ourselves, and that's one reason we set these up under one preliminary design contract with one engineer, to try to take a look at how best to stage the construction of those three. They are in close proximity, so it might make sense that we construct them all under one project, potentially. Or we may want to split them out. We just don't know at this point. Really depends on several factors. So we'll take a look at that, and that's one of the things I want the engineer to address.
Okay. One other question, please. I just want to, not regarding this, it regards the personal safety training. I just want to compliment Mr. Williams for the thoroughness with which he presented his thoughts about how this type of training can be conducted as both an NRA member and a holder of a CCW license. I think it's, it is important. And I have had a number of people ask about this sort of thing in view of things that have happened out here in West County particularly, as well as other areas that, for a long, long time, have been thought to be safe by most of us. And so I think it really is important, and maybe even more so particularly for the female population, to tell them, explain to them what can or can't be done. Look forward to it. And I'll plan to attend.
Councilmember Werther?
Thank you. I just wanted to, Mr. Brown could support this, and ultimately Ms. McCune as well as Mr. Stein, with regard to the parking, proposed parking restrictions at Pier Side Lane and Waterside Drive. Those areas currently are very wide. Both have islands on either side. And the biggest issue occurs during swim meets. As we're going into that season right now, we'll have probably four or five nights like that, plus a few weekends with the pool being there. The idea there is to push the traffic away from the immediate clubhouse area and the walkways, so that there's a clear line of sight all the way around, push the cars down the street, further down Pier Side as well as Waterside, so that avoids any potential issue. As far as parking in front of folks' homes, unfortunately, they already do that, and temporary parking restrictions tend to go up on those nights when swim meets occur.
Councilmember Stein?
Yeah, the same topic. I don't know, Rick, if you could respond to this, but on those swim meet nights, because that really is the only time that I see parking on the corners there, where would that traffic, where would those cars park? I mean, is it just away from that corner?
I'm probably not the best one to speak to that, but I think primarily, the idea is they should park on Waterside. And I gather there's pretty good, some, a lot of demand for parking on those big swim meet dates. So they're parking on both sides of Waterside, and what we want them to not do is park on Center Point, further back in the neighborhoods, but to park on Waterside.
Okay. Unfortunately, I think that this restriction is going to have the opposite effect. I think it's going to push everybody up on the Center Point, maybe further down on Pier Side. I don't think this is going to work, honestly. I think you're going to be giving out a lot of tickets. There's going to be a lot of parents and grandparents that are angry because they just wanted to see their kids swim, and they're getting tickets. I mean, maybe a better suggestion, and this goes to Ms. McCune, is that we consider hiring a, the HOA hiring a couple of policemen to, you know, move traffic, because I think without that, you're going to have that situation where people are going to park where they shouldn't, either on Waterside, Pier Side, or up Center Point. And after a couple of meets, that issue should be resolved, but without that, I can't support it. So if there's a plan for that, yes, I'll support it.
The only comment I would say is, again, the parking on Waterside that I show in red is already posted no parking. So that, in theory, they shouldn't be parking, it's only the restriction on Pier Side that would come into play, and that would be about 12 spaces, potentially.
But you probably have, I would say, 100 cars right in that corner, right there, you know, along Waterside, all the way to the corner, and sometimes down Pier Side, although I think they're better over there. But, I mean, it's kind of a free-for-all whenever you have those meets. And I support the idea, because when you got, especially small kids that are coming to a swim meet, they may just run out. If you're turning around, you know, from Pier Side onto Waterway or Waterside, you may miss them. So I support that, but I just think that if you implement this without proper guidance to the folks attending the clubhouse event for swim meets, it's going to be chaos.
Well, I do know that they use the Apple Hill Academy to park in that surface lot, from what I am told, as well as Waterside to the south of the pool, to the south of Center Point. So I think the thought is there's plenty of parking available on Waterside, essentially south of Center Point.
Sure. And I think, you know, Joe did this whenever there was an issue with the School for the Autistic on the corner where Kinder Care was, where it was kind of like talking to the folks that were parking out on the street and explaining to them why that's not appropriate. And after a few days, of course, they go there every day, but after a few days, that issue was resolved and it hasn't resurfaced. So I guess what I'm asking is that if you will commit to addressing that issue some way, whether it's the city or in conjunction with the HOA, then I can support it. I mean, and I don't know if you would like Ms. McCune to come up, since she's a major party to this. Mr. Mayor, can we have the HOA president come up for this?
The City Attorney is advised against that. Sorry.
Mr. Williams just told me I can't miss McCune.
I agree. So she can or can't?
Thank you.
Hi, I just want to clarify some issues here. We've worked with Captain Mundell, and we're only talking about three major swim meets this year, so it's only three Mondays out of the whole entire year that we're going to face this year. It's a light home meet. Where the two lines are on Waterside, that's already restricted. The signs have been there for quite some time, and we call the police when cars are parked there, or the residents do a good job of calling themselves. And the police have always come out and had them. We give them the warning from the swim meet podium. So most people move their cars, and we don't have a problem there. But it is a problem, because there is a center island. As far as Center Point goes, I also spoke to Captain Mundell, and we do put in temporary no parking signs up on the actual street, because there is a small median when you pull into that area, which would not allow a fire truck if there was an emergency. So we do put temporary no parking signs there, and I will tell you that all the way down Waterside, it does get busy, and Apple Hill is awful. Also, welcome that. The Pier Side issue is that kids like to cross the street there, and it does impede the traffic view. And with the multiple cars there, it's caused a problem. So I think it's a safety issue at this point. And if you push down Pier Side, there is no parking there anyway. There's the entrance, and then it narrows down to a one lane because of the center island. So nobody could be pushed down on Pier Side. So just for clarification, the HOA will work with Captain Mundell. The community officer has been really helpful by putting those signs up, and the swim team also cooperates, and we do have traffic people out there to flow. But we do use our services. But if we feel, Captain Mundell feels that we need to hire something else, we would be more than happy to support that.
I would encourage Wildwood Police to have, or the county police, to come out on that first night and just kind of help guide people. I don't think it would be a long commitment, because people get there all at once. But as usual, you're on top of things. Thank you.
No. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jordan? I'm sorry, Councilmember Stein, were you finished?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jordan?
I have a question for Rick. With respect to the CRF Restorative Seal Project, as you know, I got communication from a resident that said they experienced problems last year. And I'm wondering, is there advanced communication that goes out to residents near where this is happening? And if so, is it done by the city, or is it done by the contractor, and how far in advance?
Well, we sent out mailers last week, Thursday or Friday, to the residents along the routes that are being treated. So if they live adjacent to the road and it's getting the treatment, they should have been mailed and received a postcard with information about the project. So that should have hit already for Henken Road, and then soon thereafter Bouquet. In addition, the contractor, from what I understand, they're putting an information, like a mailbox, up with additional information on each route. So if you're driving by and you're curious what's going on, you can stop actually and grab a flyer in that manner. So that's the other method that we are utilizing to communicate at the moment.
So you had mentioned that if they stayed off the road during the time where the material is wet, I'm just wondering, is there some type of temporary signs that go up that say this is wet, don't park here, if that might be something that could be done if not to avoid problems?
Well, the contractor, this is all they do. So they're very aware of traffic handling after they apply the asphalt, and they're very aware of how long it takes for the asphalt to set. So they'll be out handling traffic. They'll have guys on the street directing traffic, and with the goal of controlling folks and making sure they don't drive on it where they're not to drive. Of course, they're going to have cones out, and there you'll be coned off, so people shouldn't be driving on it. Again, this is all they do, is apply this treatment. So they're very familiar with what people will try to do and what people shouldn't be doing.
Well, given that the resident reports that there were problems with vehicles last time, do you think a reminder or a discussion could be had with the contractor, just to make extra sure that that's taken care of?
I will be glad to take that on myself, and I think we all would prefer not to have any problems. And so the more we communicate with everybody, the better, and we'll make sure we communicate with the contractor.
Councilmember Gagnani?
Yeah, thanks. Rick, I want to do a follow-up. Mr. McGowan brought up the issue about the Austin Fort Road, Wild Horse Creek Bridges. And Mr. Bertolino asked me a question at Admin Public Works about if I knew if there was any objections to changing those bridges much from the local residents. I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody directly yet, but I made a couple of phone calls today, in fact. Is there any chance that we could notify some of the people that might be most directly affected as to their opinion about this? You know, Mr. McGowan will tell you, he got me one time when I was on Public Safety Board because I was going to change the character of his road. They take this very seriously over there on Wild Horse Creek. Is there any way we can notify those folks?
Absolutely. I think that would be their goal, really, with the preliminary design, is to reach out to the property owners and get involved with them, hear any feedback they may have early on, so we know where they stand and what their concerns are.
Well, I'd be happy to help with that. Anything that you need to do to get that done, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll see if we can do that.
Councilmember Werther, did you have your hand up for another time to speak? Okay. Anyone else? Joe, I had a question. So this is something I noticed in the Rural Internet Project Report update, that we're having the meeting of the committee on the 24th, but it's off-site at the Wildwood Hotel because we had a conflict here. And that means we can't livestream it. So what about, I mean, I assume there's nothing we can do about that at this point, because it's scheduled, I guess, and cleared. So I think my question then is, going forward, not just with this meeting, but any meeting, what are we doing to make sure, if it's at all possible, not to have meetings that we can't livestream, since we've got that all set up and going?
That's a very good question, Mayor. As you know, the building is almost in constant use now every night, and we are even doubling up on some of those evenings with a meeting in the community room, a meeting here, and occasionally, we even have one upstairs in the planning and public works area. From the perspective of this meeting, the department does have a fairly nice video camera that we purchased for the Historic Preservation Commission when we were doing oral interviews of some of the older residents. We could certainly try using that and record the presentation by the consultant, which is, I think, the most important component of the meeting, and then place that on the website and elsewhere.
Without objection, I'd like to see us do that. And if we can videotape all of it, all the better.
We will.
Just because, I mean, that's, not that we wouldn't want to do it for any meeting, but this is an issue that is very important, certainly to at least two of our wards. So... And then, back to the question, has there been discussion about maybe altering times? Some meetings may start a little earlier, some a little later, so we can maybe, you know, get one in, and then the next one come the same evening, or...
Up to this point, and this is one of the longest-standing committees we have, beginning in December of 2007, we've not had this issue frequently. This may be the first time in memory. The reason the date became so entrenched is the consultant was available. And we're at that stage, we're about a month out from when the final report is due, starting in June. And so their ability to attend and present was critical for the meeting, and that's what the Rural Internet Access Committee had asked. Quite frankly, a number of the members can't attend at this meeting on Wednesday. We've had a couple of unexpected cancellations already. And so from that perspective, it's just, it's the perfect storm for not necessarily having as a productive meeting as we could, but we need the information from the consultants, so all of us, the city council, those that lack internet access, and city personnel can review it in ample time to meet their deadline.
So let me ask you this. Given the lack of, the inability to livestream it and the cancellations, is it something that we could get the information and distribute that and reschedule the meeting for the commission and still have time for the commission and ultimately the council? Do you think it needs to go forward as a...
I was going to talk with Mr. Young and Mr. Cross tomorrow at our staff meeting about that, and see if there was any potential pitfalls I've not seen. But the benefit to the committee structure is having those interested committee members who have a great deal more background than Kathy, Arnett, or I there to basically participate. And without that benefit, as I say, the meeting loses a little luster. So we'll take a look at that.
Unless we could reschedule the consultant, maybe, or something.
Yeah, we have to do it early enough, so they obviously can change their airline schedules and still be able to maybe get a credit or refund on their tickets. I'm sure they can.
Okay. We'll follow up, and we can discuss that. You get the idea. So just if we can, the point is, if we can have meetings, I know you're trying at this, but to utilize the livestream and not have them off-site, unless there's just a really good reason for it.
We need a bigger City Hall, sir.
Yeah. Well, we'll...
That could be...
I expect we just want to discuss that online. Okay, well, that was all I had. Anything else, Councilmember McGowan?
Just one other thought, Joe. Is there any possibility that any of the other conflicting meetings might have less public attention and that sort of thing? They could be moved there and then bring Rural Internet here.
We'll see what we can do, sir. That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Okay, moving to action items, Joe. I think the first one is yours, the Town Center Public Space Area Request, RFP.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, as you're all keenly aware, during 2018, the city council spent a great deal of time discussing a potential land purchase of two parcels of ground immediately west of City Hall that are served by Crestview Drive. The circumstances were such that the acquisition did occur, and the city now owns an additional six acres with a common boundary with City Hall. As the budget process was moving forward at the conclusion of 2018, city council members made it clear that the development of that site, that six-acre parcel of ground, would be a priority, not just in 2018, but also 2019, with a desire to have construction as early as possible. One of the first steps in that process is to engage a firm to assist in three tasks. Those three tasks have been defined by the Parks Planning and Parks Committee at its meeting this past Tuesday. The letter that's been prepared for city council defines those three tasks, and the committee did make certain additions to the descriptions, as well as the task. The department hopes it's captured those appropriately from the committee meeting. And tonight, the committee is presenting what would be a final draft of the request for proposals with the desire to have the city council provide input, if any, and if the council does not have input, per se, to endorse its current form and allow it to be advertised to the consulting community.
And you would be looking for a motion to that effect, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens?
I'll make the motion to proceed with the, with the current...
As Joe recommended?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Manten. Discussion on the motion. Councilman Garitano?
Could you clarify on page two, items number four and five? It says that in number four, the plan was to include at least one public forum where keypad polling is utilized. And then on number five, there are two public input forums. Could you explain whether there are three forums or two forums, and what's the difference?
Probably a little bit better wording, but there would be three. One would be in the initial development of the public input, and then thereafter, task three is the preliminary design, and that was part of the process. The department, I believe, along with the committee, would like to see the input once again. And typically, we do two forums, one in the north half of the city, and one in the south to make it as convenient as possible. as possible for participation.
Thank you, Joe.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a question for you, Joe. I saw where the report came back from Celebrate Wildwood Commission, that they're asking you to use that property for the event this year. Were you planning to make any changes to that before then?
The intent of the new plan for the Celebrate Wildwood site is to use, for the most part, the lawn area of the property that adjoins City Hall. So, it had been turf, it was cut somewhat regularly, and it lends itself probably to the small area or utilization we're planning. The changes would be to, for access. We may have to remove some of the honeysuckle and a few of the evergreen trees that were planted for shielding and sightlines along the common boundary line. So, there will be some work in that area to accommodate access.
You got funding for that already?
For...
For those changes?
We have funding for the Celebrate Wildwood event. My thought is that the change is necessary to facilitate access between Main Street and that section of that one property will probably be in the range of maybe $1,000 to $1,500.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? See no discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Joe, I believe you're up for the next item as well. Agreement with the Team Noah Foundation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, the Planning Economic Development Parks Committee many years ago established a process for the consideration of outside organizations wanting to utilize city-owned facilities. The prompter for the development of an agreement was here in Town Center. Many were finding that our small public plaza, the easement areas where we used to hold concerts and show movies, and the streets themselves lent well to many types of events. Although, we do not see many of these as we used to, there is an organization that would like to hold a night ride in Bluffview and Rock Hollow properties. The ride would be in October of this year, and as part of the process, the organization must complete what they expect from the city and what they intend to provide, as well as provide insurance coverage for the event itself. In this particular case, the committee was presented the proposal. The organization does not need any assistance from the city, other than potential police presence for parking purposes, which the organization would pay as secondary. So, there is no cost to the city. Acknowledging that the organization is to provide all the services and cover the cost, and there was no conflict in the schedule with any city-scheduled event, the committee endorsed the agreement, and tonight, the department is seeking the same from city council. Thank you.
A motion to approve.
Please.
Councilmember Dodwell?
I'll make the motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve, and Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Jordan. Any discussion on the motion? See no discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And finally, Joe, Community Park Phase Three.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the Planning and Parks Committee is presenting a report to city council tonight that is twofold. The first is a very detailed explanation of the cost changes in Phase Three of Community Park due to actions of the Army Corps of Engineers and the State Historic Preservation Office. In the report, the reasons why there are additional costs are explained in detail and were presented to the Planning and Parks Committee at its meeting this past Tuesday. If there are questions regarding the additional $38,000 that has been added through change orders specifically relating to the change in the bridge and the relocation of one bio-retention area, the department will be glad to answer them at this time. If there are no specific questions, the true purpose of the next item is to identify a revised bridge design. The committee was presented two of them and selected what the department described as the least intrusive of the two and one that would blend into the natural setting associated with Community Park and the creek crossing over Bottom Creek. With the assistance of Mr. ... The selected bridge per the committee's action this past Tuesday, this design, and rendering was provided by the company that manufactures them. Here's one under installation in a different part of the country. As you can see, it's a bridge that's constructed of wood members intended to mimic the surrounding environment, and for all intents and purposes is to be constructed to accommodate emergency vehicles in terms of loads and a full span of Bottom Creek, so no disturbance will occur within the defined banks or the interior portion of the water feature. The other choice, arch structure, and that arch structure is approximately $100,000 more to construct, which also played a role in the committee's recommendation. And so, from the perspective of the department, the committee recommended the first option for this here. That particular option is a less expensive solution to the problem we're facing on the creek crossing than the original three-sided arch culvert. So, in the end, we've got a less intrusive design, I believe, at a reduced cost as well. So, tonight, the department, for the benefit of the committee, is presenting its recommendation for Option One relative to the new bridge design.
Option One being without the arch?
Exactly.
And you would like a motion to that effect?
Please.
Councilmember Manten?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Councilmember McGowan. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Werther?
Mr. Stevens, just real quick. I know with the pictures that you put up, our examples, how much is this, how long is this span going to be? Certainly doesn't seem like it's going to be nearly as big as the arched one that you showed here, or maybe even this one.
Lengthwise, it's a minimum of 84 feet.
84 feet, really?
Yes.
Wow.
Because we have to do a full span. We cannot disturb any portion of Bottom Creek. So, it will be no less than 84 feet, and there's been some discussion it may approach 90 feet to address a small floodplain area on the east side of the creek itself.
I must be thinking differently because the creek, I thought the creek was not nearly that wide at that point. It must be simply so we are up out of floodplain?
We're out of the floodplain, we're out of the floodway, and we're devoid of any disturbance in the creek itself.
Okay, very good.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yeah, Joe, I've heard you discuss this before, and I know what's kind of over there is Joe Harrell was involved in this, is that right?
Yes.
There's been no request for any archaeological cataloging of anything along the creek?
As part of the discussion relating to the Corps' action, Mr. Harrell and an associate of his did a thorough analysis of the Phase Three area, and we are relocating a small section of the bio-retention swale to accommodate an area, but other than that, there was nothing that would preclude completing Phase Three.
So, there's no plan for any archaeological excavation there?
No. What the archaeologists said is that they were fragments, but they were sufficient, meaning that they believed that they had been already disturbed and brought to the surface. They weren't buried, that the site would not be eligible for national register purposes, and so therefore, they did not see any issue with disturbance. We are staying clear of it under the redesign, just to be good stewards, and they will be conducting, if the committee and city council concurs, an overall cultural inventory of the park, probably this year or next year.
Let me ask a question in conjunction with that. What about any input from upstream if we change any of the parameters that increase the flow into that creek? What about that?
Well, twofold. We're not doing anything in the creek, so we're not creating a structure that might cause a rise in the flood elevation. We're spanning it completely, so no change. Secondly, we're actually doing stormwater management. That's the bio-retention, some pervious surfaces, et cetera, so we're treating the stormwater on-site.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember McGowan?
Just sort of a matter of information. This room right here is 47 feet wide. I actually measured it one time. So, we're talking about a bridge that would be twice as, twice as long as what this room is wide. It's a pretty good distance. Joe, there is a bridge, I think it's on the Al Foster Trail, that looks like it might be somewhat similar to this, at least wood, combination wood and metal bracing and one thing and another, but is that right?
That's correct. There's 13, there are 13 bridges on the Rock Hollow Trail. Wheeler did all of those bridges, and this bridge will be very similar in context.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodwell?
Just a quick question, Joe. What's the length of life for the timbers on bridges of this type? I've just, since I'm not in Parks and Planning, haven't asked that question before.
It's a very good question. When we talked about it at Rock Hollow, which is our greatest experience, given that we had 13 of them, with proper maintenance, the feeling was is that they are a 30- to 50-year, but again, with proper maintenance. And then, secondly, in Rock Hollow, it's a wild area when it rains, and so, we have to address a lot of the creek areas by the bridges, just to ensure that they're not being undercut. Here, the situation's a little different. Bottom Creek does rise substantially during torrential rains, certain storm events, but with the full span and out of the floodplain, there should be no water in association with the bridge.
I concur with that, since I live or I'm very close to Bottom Creek.
Yeah. Councilmember Manten?
Joe, is there any low-level, like mercury lighting at the base of that bridge?
No. It's intended not to have any lighting. We have some lighting in the shelter areas, but it's underneath the roof itself, so it points down. It'll be on timers. And then, we were talking about several low-level bollard lighting, just in the parking lot area for the purposes of when people are coming either a little before sunrise or just after sunset and leaving. So, very low lighting, and that's the intended purpose. There's wildlife there that would obviously be impacted in a negative way if there's too much lighting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yeah, one last question for you, Joe. Is there any attempt being made to keep people out of the creek itself, going down in there and whatever disturbing things?
Actually, in Phase One, we encouraged the access to the creek and actually provided two paths for children and others to go down to the creek and learn about what happens in the creek. It's actually one of the items we hear the most compliments about, the integration of the playground and pavilion area into the natural environment of the park.
And there's no concern about disturbance from human invasion?
No. As I say, the kids are catching tadpoles and picking up rocks that they believe, like I, may be archaeological assets, but for the most part, their parents make them leave them there before they come out of the creek.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
All right. That concludes the action items. Thank you, Joe. I believe next would be adjournment. entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Councilmember Manten, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. Non-debatable. All in favor of adjourned the work session? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll be, we've adjourned the work session, and we will convene the main meeting of the council at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Thank you.[304.77]
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order the meeting of the City Council for the City of Wildwood for Monday, April 22nd, 2019. Ms. Termlinger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Here.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Manten.
Here.
Councilmember Shea. Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Bo.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Garitano.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Okay, thank you. For those of you that are with us this evening, thank you for being here. It's good to see you. And if you have a cellphone or other electronic device with you that is on, if you would please turn it to silent, we would appreciate that. And if you're all that are comfortably able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is approval of minutes from the April 8th, 2018 work session and regular meeting. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Made by Councilmember McCutcheon, seconded by Councilmember McGowan. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
We have one abstention, Councilmember Bartoni. Okay, thank you. Next, moving to public participation, I want to mention just a couple of things about that before we begin. It is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to him or her. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the City Council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. This means that interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited, and I would like to thank each one of you that are going to speak in advance for following these. First speaker card, please.
Jeff Levitt, Ward 7.
Hi, Jeff Levitt, 16303 Gulf Winds Court. Two topics I'd like to bring up. First is Bill 2463, the contract with waste connections. I didn't see online and haven't been able to find specifics of the contract itself as far as pricing for residents, and specifically how yard waste is handled. So I would just leave that open question, and if it's answered during that item, that would be great. And then, secondly, is just a suggestion for the Lake Chesterfield swim meets. My suggestion would be, could we utilize one of the city electronic signs for those three meet days simply to highlight being aware of pedestrians?
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Betsy Vanderheiden, Ward 5.
Good evening, Mayor Boland and councilmembers. I'm just here in support of the Ward 5 park. It's been a long and arduous journey the last 10 years. It started with just figuring out what was going to happen with the track of land called Brightleaf, and went through many, many meetings, PNC meetings, council meetings, so that Brightleaf would become what it is today. Now, we have an awesome park planned. We've had citizen input on that, resident input, and there have been adjustments made to that plan based on residents' input. And I appreciate that, the work that the Division of Parks and Planning has done to fulfill on that. There are very many families waiting in the wings, and they are very anxious to see a playground that is walkable and a place where community can gather. Thank you very much for your vote.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Joyce Brumek, Ward 5.
My name is Joyce Brumek. I live at 2405 Evergreen Forest Court. I just want to reiterate that I'm for the playground, and I thought it was all settled that we were going to do the playground. Anyway, I am for the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Susan Triber, Ward 5.
Susan Triber, 15912 Sandalwood Creek Drive. The residents in my neighborhood, Hickory Manor, want a small neighborhood walking park. When I helped knock on doors and have people sign the petition years ago, that's what the interest they expressed, yet somehow it turned into a large park. And I do realize it's been cut down due to budget issues. But my idea is that instead, we, rather than a centralized park at the end of the Pond Grove Loop, Hickory Manor area, why not split the park between the subdivisions to benefit a broader area of the community? So you can see, there's Hickory Manor, there's Brightleaf, and I just put a picture of Anniversary Park right here and up there, just to show you that you could have a park at both ends. On the lower portion, that's the area where the park in Brightleaf could go. It's city-owned land. It's got a tree canopy. It's already paved. Here's a bigger picture. Be really nice. With the proposed Ward 5 park, Brightleaf and Evergreen residents will have to drive or walk down about a quarter of a mile down the walking trail, or they'll have to drive around to get to the Hickory Manor end of the park. By placing one of the play circles in Brightleaf, it would benefit everyone. Brightleaf, Birch Forest, it's very near there. Evergreen as well. The houses across town center could walk across the bridge. With the money saved, placing a play circle at Hickory Manor End with gazebo and a bathroom, and the other at Brightleaf, there would be probably extra money left to put a sunshade or plant trees near the Hickory Manor Inn. I think a decorative landscape with benches or a butterfly garden, or something visually appealing that everyone could enjoy would be nice. I mean, here's just an idea, but a park developer could come up with something better. Why does it always have to be playground equipment? So anyway, I think this idea of having a park on both ends would alleviate traffic congestion and parking issues. If it was a smaller park on one end, there wouldn't be such a need for parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Aubrey Stein, Ward 7.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Stein. I'm from Ward 7. I am Councilman Stein's daughter, and I would like to say a few words about his time on this council. When I was in fifth grade, my dad wrote his name in for the position of councilmember for Ward 7 during the local election without the plan to do so. He told all his friends to vote for him, and lo and behold, here he is. He decided that he wanted to do something about the Lake Chesterfield Lake, and the best way he felt he could accomplish that was to join the council. And here we are on his last council meeting, five years later. There were many nights in there that he dreaded coming to these meetings, but he stuck through it and did the best he could for the City of Wildwood. And I want to say that I am proud of my dad and all that he has done for our neighborhood, ward, and city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Larry Bros, Ward 1.
Larry Bros, Ward 1. I just wanted to step up tonight and just extend my thank you to each and every one of the council members. I think it's a difficult job, and it's a necessary job, and I want you to know I appreciate it. I wish the very best to the new candidates and the re-elected candidates, and I'm here to support each and every person on the council. I think it's very important that everybody works together, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Kenneth Remy, Ward 3.
Kenneth Remy, 2148 Wildwood Meadows Court, Wildwood, Missouri, 63005. We need to get a bigger podium.
Talk to Gene Finnegan about that.
So, I'll try to make this brief and within a timeframe. So, I love Wildwood. As a show of hands, who else here loves Wildwood?
Of course.
Hope it's everybody. Then, if I asked by a show of hands, how many folks think that there's an opportunity for us to just improve the way that we conduct city business over the last couple of years? Great. So, the last two elections have demonstrated to us, especially with new candidates against incumbents, 67% of our citizens want something different, 2,300 to 1,100 votes. They want us as a council to work together. They don't want camps. They don't want Game of Thrones. They don't, they want, they want unity. Frankly, I think they want to hear the wonderful positive things coming from this dais and not any of the negative, unneeded drama. And there's a lot of great positive going on, including one council member on the board for the St. Louis Municipal League, yet another traveling to Jefferson City to work on opposition to Better Together, still another providing saplings this past weekend to citizens, and another collecting signatures for a local vote against the Better Together movement. I think our citizens don't care whose name is up on the dais, but really just want their council members to protect their interests, build community, and get out of their way so they can live their lives that they intended when they moved into this beautiful community. As long as they are protected and free to live their lives, most citizens don't even probably care to hear from council. So, tonight, we will have Councilmember Shea, Stein, and Bartoni leaving this council. We owe them a debt of gratitude for their service over the years for this community, as I know that this has been a passion for each of them to want the best for this city. I will rise at that moment to show my support for each of their services. Furthermore, we will have three new members to council, in myself, Miss Edens, and Mrs. McCune. We will have a steep learning curve, but I have the, but have the resolve to want to give our best from our citizens to this city. And so, we will need some time in your support to get there. So, my hope, my ask, if you will, is let's all agree to a moratorium on social media and conversational negative comments about those on council and those that have left. Let's choose kindness and a message of positivity for the next month while this council works together and builds trust. Just one month. Let's just see how it works. Like the many factions that unified in the early 1990s to aptly incorporate this wonderful place in 1995, it's time to move forward. I have no doubt that we will get there, especially after speaking in person on the telephone with many of the current members that also love this city as much as you or I. They want to start anew for the betterment of this city. This city's green space is the envy of our county. Let's continue to build relationships in our community of neighbors that will equally be sought after and envied by the rest of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Jane Finnegan, Ward 5.
Hi, Jane Finnegan, 2517 Rainforest Drive, Wildwood, 63011. I have two things I wanted to talk about tonight. Do I talk about them both now? Okay. So, number one, five stories, whatever that resolution is, over in town center. I do not think that should pass. I think four stories is plentiful. I don't think we're filling all of the spaces that we currently have. And I think that when they put forth their commitment, that, that should be honored by them. They don't need five stories. Four stories should suffice. We are already looking at with the destruction of the trees and that. I can already sit there and look at the senior center. I can sit there and look at the hotel. There's light overdraft. I don't think five stories is necessary in town center. It wasn't part of the plan. It shouldn't be. That's one. Number two, the city park. I hear there's some controversy or some concerns that we should maybe not pass this. It has been 10 years, not a day, not 10 days, not 10 months, not 10 weeks, 10 years, 10 long years. It only took one and a half years to destroy part of Ward 5. They're rebuilding it, but it only took one and a half years to do that, and it's taken us 10 years to get this before you all. And I hate to say it, I think it's been more like 15. My sons were nine and 10 at the time that I built and erected a basketball hoop in the middle of my front yard on a hill because they couldn't have one on the street. I believe you might remember the offshoot of that. But anyhow, they're 27 and 28 now. They're off, and they're doing well and have no need for a basketball court at mommy's house. That being said, I stood here many times over many years. I begged, I pleaded, and I even cried to do the right thing for the kids over in that area. It's congested. There's no place for them to go. Maybe my neighbors' children will benefit from this. I hope so, because not being able to play basketball as a kid, they have internet access. We don't have to spend the money on internet access. There's an inordinate amount of money being funneled that way. It's time that we funnel it so our kids can play outside in an area that's close to their home. Crossing Highway 109 to get there to go to the community park, I'm not going to let my 10- or 11-year-old kid do that. Please keep that in mind. These kids need a place to go other than to cross over town center and be kicked out of bright company because they're hanging out. Secondly, and most importantly, and thank you for your talk, please don't let politics keep you from getting this done. It needs to get done. It's long overdue. We have trailheads everywhere. Bikers roam all over the country. They come. Our kids can't play. There's no room. 10 or 15 years and an infinite, an infinite amount of requests, denials, excuses, and more tears than you'll ever know. That's what's going to be coming in front of you tonight. And I implore you, I beg you one more time, pass this with your whole heart and soul, because those kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Fran Gregg Nani, Ward 1.
Fran Gregg Nani, Ward 1, and I'll make this real quick. I just want to put in my word again in favor of the reappointment of Mr. Rick Archesky to planning and zoning. I understand the issue of him having served many years on there, but his knowledge and his time that he spends in preparation for the meetings and the expertise that he has that no one else on that committee has, and no one who has been put up for that committee as his replacement has the background that he has. And there have been many times at meetings, I've served on there for a number of years, where he has brought up subjects that none of us know about or would have ever thought to bring up, and he would be sorely missed on that committee if he is not reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please. Okay, thanks to all of you who spoke this evening. Moving next to the state of the city. The state of our city continues to be strong. Thanks to Mr. Steve Cross and his team, we were just recognized for outstanding financial reporting among municipalities. Our finances are sound. We were also recently recognized as the best place in Missouri to raise a family. We've accomplished much of my Wildwood 2020 vision plan. We continue to obtain cleanup of our arterial roadways by the Missouri Department of Transportation in St. Louis County. We've inventoried trees and public spaces and developments that need replaced. We're beginning Manchester Road improvements, and we considered the viability of a public activity venue and are contemplating a Town Center Village Green. Beautification of prominent areas within our city is a key element of the Wildwood 2020 plan that remains to be accomplished, and I am asking the council to support implementation of this initiative that will further set us apart as a city and add value in real terms for all our residents. We also continue to be vigilant as to allowing only developments that are right for our residents. These developments are now required to comply with our new Grand Tree Protection Ordinance, and I will continue to be committed to greater green space and lot sizes in our residential developments. Our city is more transparent with live streaming of our meetings and has achieved increased participation in governance by more of our greatest asset, our residents. We have two challenges before us. The first is the proposed St. Louis City-County merger that would transfer zoning and development decision-making away from our residents to a centralized St. Louis County body. We've already responded to the proposed merger by pursuing permanent protection of Wildwood's key value assets through the formation of our new Wildwood Preservation Commission, and we will continue to protect our residents' interests. Our second challenge is from our residents. They want their leaders to work together on things that matter to them. This can only occur through establishing trust and bilateral mutually beneficial relationships based on that trust. I will be unwavering in working with you toward addressing the single most important concern for each of our wards. For Ward 1 and 6 residents, rural high-speed internet. For Ward 2, 3, 4, and 5 residents, Cox Creek erosion. For Ward 7 residents, Lake Chesterfield. For Ward 8 residents, larger lots and more green space in residential developments. Let us move forward recognizing that results can be achieved only through working together as a team. Let us also recognize that all of us who are elected officials have the public trust and purse in our hands and must act in ways that stand the test of time regardless of who is sitting in our seats. We must therefore always be mindful that we serve our residents and only our residents. Let us accomplish the things they want. Our 35,517 residents expect and deserve nothing less. Thank you. Okay, next we have the proclamation from, for Arbor Day. I just want to acknowledge that. It's part of the meeting packet. We are continuing our recognition as a tree city, and the proclamation is part of that. Next, moving to appointments, we have one which is the Planning and Zoning Commissioner to Ward 7. Councilmembers, you've been provided with my memorandum relative to the appointment of Jeff Levitt. I would entertain a motion to approve Councilmember Levitt, former Councilmember Levitt, excuse me, to that position, made by Councilmember Stein, seconded by Councilmember Manten. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please. And a yes vote would be to approve the appointment.
Councilmember Gregg Nani.
No.
Councilmember McGowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
No.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Bo.
No.
Councilmember Jordan.
No.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Nay.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Levitt. Look forward to working with you on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I would also like to thank Mr. Archesky for his many years of service. Next into legislation, Bill 24, second reading is Bill 2461 is before the council for final passage, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Manten, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, Councilmember McCutcheon. Any other opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Termlinger, please read Bill 2461.
Bill 2461, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to execute an amendment to the exclusive solid waste license agreement extension on behalf of the City of Wildwood with here-to-serve Missouri Waste Division LLC doing business as Meridian Waste Services LLC for the collection of residential waste.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything further you would like to add to the information pertaining to Bill 2461?
Just briefly, Mayor and councilmembers, just a reminder, this is only relative to Meridian's existing license agreement and the changes relative to dual-stream recycling. So I am available for any other questions.
All right. Seeing no questions, please call the roll, Ms. Termlinger, for final passage of Bill 2461.
Councilmember McGowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
On behalf of the residents' complaints, no.
Councilmember Bo.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Yes.
Bill passes. Thank you. Moving to Bill 2462. It also concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember McGowan. Is there a second? By Councilmember Bertolino. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Termlinger, please read Bill 2462.
Bill 2462, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a use and license agreement on behalf of the City of Wildwood with here-to-serve Missouri Waste Division LLC doing business as Meridian Waste Services LLC for the collection of residential recyclables on city property.
Thank you. Rick, anything further you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2462?
No, sir. The bill is ready for final passage. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Bartoni?
Rick, so we're, this is, we're staying with dual-stream recycling till August 1st with this, correct?
Again, this, yes. This is only relative to Meridian's recycling on city property and would only be applicable through the terms of their, to the agreement through August 1st.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stein.
Yeah, and I apologize, Rick, because this is probably more appropriate for the previous bill, but it's still, it should be brought up. The city and, and Meridian need to come up with a way to pull back or pick up those extra bins. I know, I talked to Heath a month ago and asked him to take ours back. It didn't, it only had one wheel, and I didn't want it anyway. And I know a lot of other people that are saying, I don't have room in my garage. I can't put it outside my house. It's a mess. And I know that there's, there's a backorder of totes. So, in the meantime, we, you know, I know I don't need the extra bin, and I know others that feel the same. If there was a way for us to drop them off somewhere so that they could be checked back in, that would be greatly appreciated. If I just had somewhere to take it, I would do so.
I appreciate that, that comment. We have not received that request as of now, but we could certainly look into that possibility. Certainly, if there's a desire that you need a bin picked up, we will do our best to address it with Meridian. But otherwise, we could look into that, that possibility.
Any further questions? Seeing none, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2462.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Bo.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving next to Bill 2463, it is also before the council for final passage and concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Greg Nani, seconded by Councilmember Giratano. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2463.
Bill 2463, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a solid waste license agreement on behalf of the City of Wildwood with Waste Connections of Missouri Inc. for residential solid waste, recycling, and yard waste collection, hauling, and disposal within the City of Wildwood.
I believe we may need amendment on this, do we not, Rick, for some legalities?
That's correct, Mayor Bowlin. The department would like to request an amendment to Bill 2463. We would like to replace the bill that's posted with the version that's been provided to you on the dais.
And I think we received an email, the council and I received an email on that today as well.
That's correct. John Young sent an email earlier today.
Okay, thanks, Rick. We had Councilmember Stevens on the agenda or on the list first, so before we get to any amendment, Councilmember Stevens?
Um, yeah, can I make a motion to add also for item number 15 when it comes to the containers and taking possession of those to add residential customers may request the contractor to take possession of unneeded containers.
Well, the problem is that their council, well, let's see the attorney. Sorry. See the attorney, then.
Well, you can make that amendment. I can't promise they'll accept those terms, but I think consistent with the Director of Public Works, they will do their best to negotiate that as part of the service.
I would like to have it in the, as a, you know, as a part of the agreement.
So, Councilor Stevens, would you like to make an amendment as requested initially by the department based, I think, on the two things, and then add yours in to the amendment? So it'd be three things? Is that what you would like to do?
Well, no. I mean, in here, it says that the containers will remain in the possession of the residential customers upon commencement of the agreement. I just want to make sure that there's language in the agreement that says that if you have three containers and you don't want the extra dual-stream container, that the new contractor will take it back.
And I'm asking whether you would like to make an amendment just as to that, or is to that plus the two items that have been recommended and provided to the council previously?
I'll take advice from the attorney on what would get what I want done.
My suggestion would, to do this in two parts. One is to amend Exhibit A to replace it with what's been presented to you.
Okay.
And then your second motion.
So two amendments?
Correct.
Okay.
Two motions.
Okay. And does it matter which go first? Which goes first?
Yes, the amendment to replacing Exhibit A should go first.
Okay, so we'll come back to you and just, let's see if we get an amendment for the other part.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for your patience, Councilmember Stevens. Any questions or comments? If not, we would entertain an amendment as requested. Councilor Werther?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to, for the amendment to the solid waste agreement. I have a question, however, of the city attorney, given the volume...
Let's get a second.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right. Councilmember Manten, seconds. Go ahead, Councilor Werther.
Uh, Mr. Young, given the volume of changes and the presentation of this just this evening, does it make more sense for us while we're amending this to hold this back for two weeks and then come back and vote for final passage at that time?
Uh, I would say to you, one is that much of the language in there is just reiterating what's already in the proposal or the RFP, so it's not a substantive change, and I identified those for you, but you certainly can make a motion to postpone, but I believe there is a bit of a timing issue in terms of getting things under contract to get things started, but I'll defer to the Director of Public Works on that.
Well, I think I defer to Waste Connections on the timing, but I think the sense that I receive from them is that they would like to get a green light as soon as possible to move forward, so that allows them time to order the trucks, in place that order, so the trucks would be available by August 1st. So delaying it a couple of weeks could be a problem in that regard, so we'd certainly like to get it approved tonight if at all possible. I understand there's several changes that have been requested.
Not necessarily speaking for or against, but another factor is informing our residents sooner rather than later if we're going to move in this direction, just to get clarity sooner.
We'll have a hard enough time getting the train directed somewhere else once this gets out. So, Mr. Brown, to your point, then, you're saying you'd prefer that this move forward than tonight and we get the final reading done?
Yes, sir, I would.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the motion to amend on the floor. That's the main, the motion of the moment. We'll, if there's no further discussion, we'll have a vote on that, then we'll come back to the bill as amended and defer to Councilmember Stevens. Any further discussion on the amendment as proposed? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Amendment carries. Councilor Stevens, would you like to make your amendment?
Yes, I'd like to make the amendment for item number 15 to add residential customers may request the contractor to take possession of unneeded containers.
And why don't we add, "And they shall do so within X period of time," so that not just requesting, but they're obligated to do something about it?
Under the term, I mean, they could request it at any time within the contract as far as I'm concerned.
I'm saying that if they request it, it's not just a request that Meridian would need to...
I got you, that they pick it up within a certain number of days.
What do you think would be reasonable? 10 days?
Ah.
Two weeks?
30 days is fine.
30 days. Okay, so that's the amendment. Is there a second to the amendment? Seconded by Councilmember Werther? Uh, yes, sorry. Waste Connections, thank you for that point of information. Any other questions or, Councilmember Giratano?
You could, I asked this question of Rick over the weekend about what we'll do to handle the additional containers, because it is an issue, and once we move back to single stream, there's no need. Could we ask Waste Connections, who is here in the room, to opine on that? At least give us some direction, because, you know, if we're going to specify, for example, 30 days, you know, I want to know whether or not that means residents are going to leave those extra containers outside their houses for 30 days waiting for them to be picked up, or are we going to get some better clarity around what is a reasonable timeframe within a week, two weeks?
I believe, well, I know that the RFP addressed the issue of the additional recycling container, so that set out that upon the switch to single stream, Waste Connections will have to collect all the additional containers that were placed in homes for dual stream. So that's clearly addressed. And I do believe there's also verbiage in there, essentially stating that they are to address resident concerns relative to container replacements or removals within 10 days. I can clarify that. If it's not in the RFP, we can certainly add that verbiage to the agreement, but I'm relatively sure that we provided that information in the RFP, so by default, it's going to be part of the agreement.
Well, I was going to say, should we make sure that then what's in this agreement here matches what's in the RFP with regard to that item there versus us then putting something that's different than that?
John, do you want to speak to the RFP and how it applies to the agreement?
Yeah, the way the RFP, if we put something in the agreement that is different than the RFP, the agreement will supersede the RFP.
And that's my concern. If we say now you have to pick it up within 30 days, and the RFP has given us a better deal for our residents, say, within 10 days, as we mentioned, I'd rather have the 10 days than the 30. So how do we get an answer to that? Do we need to defer this to reconcile the RFP?
One option, would it not be to just say as soon as can be mutually agreed by the parties not to exceed 30 days, and if we can get it 10, if the council's comfortable with that, we would strive for that?
Yes, I would say, anything we can do better. If the RFP gives us a better deal, we should go with that.
We should go with the RFP if it's a 10.
Okay, so it'll be 10. You want to leave it at 30 or make it 10? 30 and try to get to 10 or?
10's fine. If the RFP says 10, we'll go with that.
So if there's no objection, the amendment will be 10 days, not 30. Any objection from any member of the council? All right, seeing no objection, any further discussion on the motion? And this is the amendment, and we'll go back to the main bill as amended twice. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the amendment as proposed by Councilmember Stevens, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, amendment carries. Now we're back to the main bill, 2463 as amended twice. Any further discussion on the bill? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote for final passage, please.
Councilmember Manten?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Giratano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving to Bill 2464, it is before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward 8. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Werther, Ward 8, seconded by Councilmember Stevens. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2464.
Bill 2464, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri approving a change in zoning from the non-urban resident district to the R3 10,000-square-foot resident district for a 16,989-square-foot tract of land that is located on the east side of Lindy Lane, north of Manchester Road, P.Z. 12-182540, Lindy Lane, Andrew Hildebrand.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2464?
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the bill remains unchanged from its introduction, and the department's available to answer any questions or respond to comments.
All right, any questions for Joe or any comments? Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Sternlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2464.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Giratano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manten?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to Bill 2465, it's before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward 5. Is there a motion for the final passage of Bill 2465? Made by Councilmember McCutcheon, seconded by Councilmember Bertolino. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2465.
Bill 2465, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a contract with Damian Construction Company for the development and construction of the defined components identified as part of Ward 5 Neighborhood Park, including certain ad alternatives or alternates for inclusion, all being consistent with the bid specifications and engineered plans prepared for this park improvement and as recommended by the Planning and Parks Committee of the City Council as its special, or at its special meeting on April 3, 2019.
Thank you. Joe, anything additional you would like to mention relative to Bill 2465?
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, there's a couple of points I'd like to identify.
Sure.
First, during public participation, Ms. Traver made a mention that the park had been reduced in size due to budget concerns. That's true. But equally important, during the public outreach, there were concerns raised about the three-node design, and the public input also drove the change that is being presented tonight as the final design for the neighborhood park. Secondly, there have been questions, ongoing questions regarding the depth of the park and its impact on surrounding residences. As was noted two weeks ago, the park has a depth of approximately 300 feet or a length, and it is within the Farmer-Pong Grover Loop Road right-of-way, which is 70 feet in terms of its width. So, the aerial photograph that's being presented tonight gives you a, it gives you a picture, so to speak, of the depth of the park relative to the width. Other than those two points, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the Department of Planning would note the bill has not changed since its introduction, and the Department of Planning and Parks is available for any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments relative to Bill 2465? Councilmember Stevens?
I tried this in committee. We'll see what the council thinks, but I'd like to make a motion to remove Ad Alternate Number 4, which is the fabric shade structures within play areas A and B. For a couple of reasons, just like the resident that came here mentioned, you know, kids want to go play outside, so we might as well let them play outside versus trying to create an quasi indoor/outdoor space with a rooftop over the park. Also, it's an additional $39,000 plus, you know, future maintenance cost for the fabric. So, you know, the fabric, I don't know exactly how much has it run, but you're probably looking at another $1,000 a year by the time you replace the fabric in 10 to 12 years. There's no sunshades in Community Park. There were 50, maybe 100 kids out there on Saturday playing at Community Park, out in the sunshine, enjoying the weather, and enjoying the park at Community Park, so I don't see where it's needed here either. Our Parks Department budget is stretched thin already, and our Parks Department is growing with new trails, new parks, new expansion. I really think that this is an easy $39,000 that you can take right off the top of this park that will save the city money for an unneeded, in my view, part of the park. So, I will make that motion to remove Ad-Alternate Number 4.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to remove Ad-Alternate Number 4. Is there a second? Made by Councilmember Dodwell? So we have a motion and a second to amend the bill as indicated. Any discussion? Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, we kind of dealt with this in the Parks Committee. It is 39,000. I mean, I'm all for savings. I'm all for savings. The counterpoint to that is we have an area. Of course, trees could be planted, but planting large trees is difficult. I mean, so it's going to be pretty much in the open and there's concerns about heat building up on the equipment. I think that is a legitimate concern. And the fact that there's no trees in the area was something else that we discussed. So, there is a counterpoint to your concern, so I'm bringing those up.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Councilmember Manton? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Dodwell?
It's okay. Okay, Joe. When I was looking through things, it appears that we do have some trees being added into the park that will eventually grow and provide some shade, correct?
That is the intent. Yes, ma'am.
At Anniversary Park, when Anniversary Park was started, we planted trees and we have some shade in Anniversary Park now, where our benches are seated and where some of our playground equipment is seated, correct?
Yes. If we all do our job, we know where people will congregate and we try to plant shade trees there.
Yeah. Now, I realize it's probably been close to 40 years since I've gone down a metal slide in the middle of summer, but I was able to do it and I learned my lesson on when to do it is better in the morning or it's better in the evening. And for the city to take on an additional 35,000, I just, we're supposed to be natural around here and have nature do the things that we want it to do. And I think we'll get more oxygen, we'll get more shade as the trees grow, and that will be better serving the community as a whole. If the park doesn't have shade immediately, I know when I raised my sons, they could care less whether they were in the shade or not. And when they didn't have shade, they would find someplace to go get it or they'd come home and plop in the middle of the house and ask for a large glass of water. So, I would prefer that we not over engineer, over engineer's not the word I'm looking for. It's, I'm going to be quite blunt here. I don't want to baby-fi all of our kids. Let's get outside, let's run around, let's get some sun and leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Manton?
Yes, you know, that's fine, kids being out in the sunshine, enjoying themselves. But there are parents and grandparents watching those kids.
[laughing]
And I think that they would appreciate the shade. Add to that, you know, it's going to take time for these shade trees to grow and get to the point where they can protect people. We all hear about sunscreen and everything else. Well, how about the shade screens? And 39,000 in my mind isn't a big item in the scheme of things when you look at where we spend some of our dollars.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
I think Ward 5 was on the list before me. If you want to let them go first. They both had their hands up previously.
Oh, I'm sorry if I did not see that. All right. Who was first between you two? Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Manton. 39,000 is something at this 11th hour that I'm very surprised that even is being considered. Was this, Joe, approved by Parks and Planning?
Yes, sir. There was a dissenting vote and it was Mr. Two, Ms. Jordan and Ms. Stevens.
Okay. But the rest of them, it did pass. It was discussed.
It did pass.
So, the Parks and Planning Committee moved it to the council for approval, did they not?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
So, you're talking about sunshades and you're talking about 39,000. I think one child getting a burn, it's not something we should take away 39,000 for. The atmosphere is much different today than it has been in the past. The sun rays are much different. You hear a lot of concern about skin cancer. We need some shade for our kids. This is not just a Wildwood thing. This is getting to be a trend across the country. And I'm surprised it's coming up at the very last minute as well. Those shades can be taken down. We can use them elsewhere. Isn't that true, Mr. Vunich?
Yes, the shade structure itself can be removed from the post. The post would be retained, but we can certainly use the shade structures elsewhere.
And there is an area confined within the gates of this park where the kids can run and be out in the sun as well. We show the one that kind of encompasses the whole space because we had not gone down to check other sizes of shade structures. So, that was something that we were going to look into. You know, the citizens have been waiting for this for nine years, eight years, and then maybe three before I got here. There's been many public input sessions over those eight years. This is what the parents and the residents and the grandparents all requested. They all approved this. This was something that was added by the residents of Ward 5. And I would appreciate it if you all would support the request of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Stevens?
Yes. There are gazebos in the park, correct, for shade?
There is a main shelter that's intended to provide space for seating as well as shade.
So, parents and grandparents can get out of the sun while sitting in the gazebo?
Yes.
And it is a completely fenced-in park, so the little ones can't escape, right?
Yes. The design of the play nodes are for toddlers and preschoolers, and so it was important to provide a secure area for that, those two age groups.
Right. So, a grandparent can sit in the gazebo, let the kid go. They're going to be contained in there. There's no worries about having to move to different seating areas to watch your kids. Also, I'm a little surprised why we're acting like 39,000 is just, is nothing. All right? I mean, 39 grand goes a long way in providing services to our residents. And it's not just the 39,000 upfront. The sun structures will require future maintenance. And if you're talking about taking them down and putting them back up, you're talking about time, effort and energy on the part of the Parks Department, which adds more to a Parks Department that already has a lot to do. And so, again, I just think this is a really easy way to watch the budget and not overdevelop a park with an unneeded shade structure.
Thank you. Councilmember Dillard?
Mr. Vunich, if we build this park without the sunshade and then sometime down the road, maybe three months, six months, a year, whatever, we find out through resident input surveys, testing of the playground equipment that's getting too hot or something like that, that maybe it would be a good idea for the sunshade, would it be possible then to install them at that point?
Certainly. With the authorization of the committee and action by City Council, we could do one of the play nodes or we could do both, but we could certainly do them at a future date.
Would you expect that the cost of 39,000 would go up if it had to be retrofitted or would it be approximately the same?
There's probably going to be an increase of some nature. I don't know an exact percentage, but just assume that mobilization plays a role in any contract of this nature.
Right.
So, to mobilize the entity that would install them, there'd be a cost associated with that. And for the most part, I would assume it would still be a reasonable cost relative to the overall structure of the park.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I mean, I ask that for the obvious reason. I think, I mean, I think the most prudent path to go down tonight, I agree, 40,000 is a lot of money. I think we could build this park now and if, in fact, we do find that it's needed, we can always come back and put those things in. I think that's the most reasonable path forward here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Werther?
Thank you. Mr. Vunich, for the benefit of council members as well as members of the audience, where approximately are these sunshades supposed to be located on this park?
They'd be in the general play node areas.
Would they basically cover those entire areas?
Not necessarily. The intent would be to cover some of the more, let's say, flat surface play equipment that would absorb the greatest amount of heat from the sun.
Okay. Do we, and I'm sorry, I was scanning for this in here on these sunshades. Do you have an approximate square footage of each of these shades? That gives us a better idea, obviously.
I don't. I could calculate that quickly based upon the diameter of the circles, but suffice to say that the cost is a premise on our side.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, I was a member of the committee when we, or I am a member of the committee, and I voted in favor of the plan as presented. And, you know, the rationale for my support of the sunshades was that, you know, I can remember when my kids were small, taking them over to Fouse Park and being, having to decide whether I was going to be close to where my kids were playing and stand out in the sun or going and standing under the shade, which was about 40 yards away. And, you know, I don't think that it's good to be asking parents and grandparents or whoever's there with children to make that kind of choice. I also wish that when I was a child, that somebody had had the forethought to cover some of the equipment. And yes, we learned. But I think that, you know, we have technology now that's relatively low cost. And by relatively, I mean in comparison to like a permanent roof structure. And it could avoid a lot of the downsides that I noted. I think that, and I go back to what I said at the last meeting, we can sell the community on this park when it first opens. If we don't do this right, the park will not be adopted as quickly as then it could be. So, my feeling is 39,000 is not insignificant, but for a city that has over a $20 million budget, it's really not material. What is material and what is not theoretical here is the well-being of the residents and the children. So, I still support the plan as presented by the department and the committee.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bartoni? Thank you. I'm also on the committee and going to kind of echo a little bit of what Councilmember Stein said. I think what's important is that we do this right. And, you know, my concern with getting rid of the shade trees is I don't want, I don't want parents to come up here upset and be upset that their kids can't use it for whatever reason, whether it's too hot or the equipment's too hot. I mean, I don't think that the shade structure would be up in April, you know, when it's 65, 70 degrees. I think, you know, but if you want it to be used throughout the summer, I think we're going to need those shade structures available in July and August and when, you know, it's just really hot and we're keeping that equipment, try to keep it as comfortable as possible for the kids. So, I think it's just important that we do it right the first time and give the residents what they want. Thanks. Councilwoman Jordan?
So, for the record, the reason that I felt having the shade in place, well, I support the park, I felt like in looking at the shade structures that it seemed to me, and maybe it's just my upbringing, but I played in the park all the time, my neighborhood park in St. Louis. And I don't ever remember as a kid going, boy, I wish I was in the shade. And given that we are, you know, presenting outdoors, to me to have everything covered such that it is essentially indoors, absent just the walls, to me doesn't make sense, especially when there is the opportunity to, if that's wrong and it becomes a miserable place, to address it again. I don't feel like as a city that, given at least what I've been, you know, I've read from the residents and been informed by the council members in the ward, is there's a lot of demand and interest for this park. And I don't think it's our position that we need to sell people on the benefits of the park. And it is a significant amount of money. So, I think that we try it without and know that we can quite easily amend that if it's needed.
Councilwoman Werther?
Mr. Vunich, and this is probably not a fair question, but I'll ask it. And I think Mr. Stevens actually prompted this. Have we received any complaints regarding heat exposure or other things from either Community Park, Anniversary Park, any of the trails in that regard?
Not within recent time, but shortly after the installation of the, what I would describe, period, playground equipment at Old Pond School Park, there were a number of comments about the metal slide and the metal surface. And as was noted, we advised that there's not much we can do other than, as a parent, caregiver or anyone involved, make sure that the kids understand it's hot and bare skin on hot metal generally doesn't mix. I do have a size for you. Since the right-of-way area is 70 feet in width and the nodes almost encompass all of it, Mr. Brown, my expert, and I have calculated the area of it of about 3,850 square feet. And again, that's the entirety of the node. The intent would not be to cover the entirety of the node, but that's the best I can offer you.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember Taylor?
I just wanted to follow up on the comment by Ms. Jordan. I think we discussed it in committee as well. So, there's concern about too much shade, but I believe this material isn't opaque. Is that correct, Mr. Vunich? It's sort of quasi-transparent?
Yes.
What, at a 45, 50, 70% opacity? Do we know?
I don't know. Again, the shade structures were an item that was added after the public input sessions.
Right.
More so than the initial design or designs. And so, that's something that I think we're still working on in terms of the.
Can we choose a different grades of opacity?
Certainly.
When we purchase this, we can choose different grades of opacity. So, I would think that the department would probably take into the considerations, the concern of those who don't want it too shady. Now, I mean, how that choice is eventually going to be made, but it's not a, let's say, black and white issue because we have gradients of opacity. So, I wanted to bring that up as well. As you know, I'm pro-shade, but not pro-darkness.
Certainly. And we have heard on multiple occasions that the City of DePere has shade structures in association with some of their playground equipment at their main city park. And so, the idea would be is to contact them and ask them some questions to garner their experience and expertise.
Thank you, Joe.
Councilmember Garitano?
Hey, Joe, maybe you could indulge us here. Could you tell us how we came about with having tents during Celebrate Wildwood? Why do we have shades for that event?
Quite frankly, the Celebrate Wildwood events held at the end of August, except on a couple of occasions, we've usually been in that 90 to 100 degree range with heat indexes exceeding 105. And so, if we're going to have people come and at least enjoy what they can, we need to have shade and plenty of water.
Yeah, we even get fans, I believe, for something like that, right?
Yes, we get cooling fans. And in past, we've even had air-conditioned tents for some of the main exhibits.
Well, yeah, my concern, and while I appreciate the thought of saving money, and I recall in Admin Public Works, we saved over $100,000 by not moving forward with planting shrubs along 100. So, we saved the city some money there. But I think for the kids here, when I used to take my kids to Anniversary Park, I thought I could fry an egg on that slide during the summertime. And I don't think it was any fun for them to go down that slide. So, if it's an investment here that is going to pay off as far as usability for the park for children, which is supposed to be a walkable community park over there, a walkable pocket park, I think if we can do that for the folks that come one day at Celebrate Wildwood, we should do it for them that will be using it all the time to provide shade.
Councilwoman McGowan?
Joe, very quickly, you made a comment a little bit ago that the shade structures were added after public input sessions. Was it in response to what the potential users of the park had to say about it? They thought, did they feel that straight shade structures were necessary?
That is my recollection, that we had two open-house events, one to present the plan in its original form and then a second to show them the modifications based upon the first set of comments. And that's where we first heard it, at least from my perspective.
Okay. Had lots of discussion. The motion on the floor, or I'm sorry, the amendment on the floor is to eliminate the shade structures. Show of hands, all in favor of eliminating the shade structures. It's proposing the motion. Please raise your hand. Do we have five? Is that correct?
That's my count, sir.
Okay, thank you. All opposed? Raise your hand. Motion fails. So, now we're back to the main motion, which is Bill 2465. Any further discussion on Bill 2465? See no discussion. Ms. Sternlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2465.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Pass.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
And yes for Taylor, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Motion passes. Can I say something?
Councilwoman McCutcheon?
Yeah. I would like to thank everyone up here who voted yes. The children in the community is going to love the park. They're the ones who put the concepts together. I thank the residents of Ward 5 for being persistent and for letting your heart follow your children. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Moving next to new business, we have one item for the council, which is the certification of the April 2, 2019 municipal election results as embodied in Resolution 2019-19.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. So, just logistically, I wanted to ask, I would like to make a comment, a statement, kind of a, you know, parting comment. And is that better to do before the swearing-in or should?
It would be, it would be right after this item and then the swearing-in, I think, without objection from the council.
Okay.
That's where I have that.
All right.
Okay. Thank you for the question. So, Resolution 2019-19 relative to the election results is before the council. It concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-19? Made by Councilmember Garitano, seconded by Councilwoman McCutcheon. Ms. Sternlinger, please read the resolution. results is before the council. It concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-19? Presented by Councilmember Garitano, seconded by Councilwoman McCutcheon. Mr. Merminger, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-19, certification of April 2, 2019 municipal election, whereas on Tuesday, April 2, 2019...
Actually, if you just, if you just read the title, I think...
Oh, yeah.
It's all right.
Resolution 2019-19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, certifying the results of the April 2, 2019 general municipal election.
Okay, so Resolution 2019-19 is on the floor for discussion. Is there any discussion or any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-19, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes. Without objection from any member of the council, Councilmember Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and colleagues, thank you for indulging me for a minute. And over the, I've got prepared remarks, so I apologize for reading, but over the, in this, I apologize. I'm going to read it from front to back. "Mr. Mayor and my fellow councilmembers, over the past several months, as I have been preparing to leave office, I have considered my time of service on the City Council, how I have affected others throughout the city, as well as how I've been affected in return. Now, at the end of this exercise of reflection, I have gathered a few thoughts that I would like to share with you before I go. I know that there may be some that have closed their ears and perhaps their hearts to me, and for those individuals, there is no need to listen to my full comments. Just consider this: Today, the leaders of Wildwood must commit to turning the page, to recalibrate, to focus on bringing common cause and unity back to the governance of our community, for nothing less than our ability to self-govern. The basis for which the City of Wildwood was founded nearly 30 years ago is at stake. If you're still with me, here's the challenge: We are 16 opinionated vociferous individuals. We argue and compete and sometimes even vilify each other in our rancorous public debates, but we have always had so much more in common with each other than in disagreement. If we only remember that and give each other the benefit of the presumption that we all love our city, we will get through these challenging times. These eloquent words are not my own, but those of one of my lifelong heroes, whom you know, Senator John McCain. And I have changed a few words to make it fit the context of the city. I don't presume to hold a candle to his epic lifetime of service, but so much of what he said to us towards the end of his life that relates to the endemic tribal entrenchment that Congress suffers from today applies so well to our city's current environment. In fact, I would hazard to say that the sentiment of Senator McCain about tribalism is even more relevant to the leaders of Wildwood. Now, I am 100 percent positive that each member of the City Council, as well as the mayor, every volunteer service on our committees and commissions, stand by each of the following ideals for Wildwood. Great appreciation should be bestowed upon the founders of Wildwood for their foresight and courage to stand up to the St. Louis County Council to ensure that the residents of the area, not the county council, have the ultimate say about what kind of community should exist here. Secondly, the master plan is the best articulation of the community standards that reflect the intent of the residents, both in 1992 and in 2019. We believe that green space should be planned for, cherished, and maintained throughout the city. A fully connected trail system, the likes of which is unparalleled across the state of Missouri, is to be pursued and maintained. We don't want to have bureaucracy. Small government is sufficient. The city government must be jealous of the residents' trust and operate in a fair and transparent manner at all times. Wildwood is a city for the people, not developers, big-box retailers, or any other moneyed interests. Wildwood must continue the effort for full internet connectivity for all residents. The list goes on, and I apologize if I missed one that you're most fond of, but I was just brainstorming and came up with those. So the leaders of the city should always keep such a list before them so they can remember why they and each of their colleagues are serving. There will always be differing schools of thought for how we conduct business of the city, but there must never be divergence on what the business of Wildwood is. We cannot fall into the trap of factions, and an example would be founders versus mayor supporters, theoretical, of course, at the expense of our core values. I believe that we have veered off course for more than just a couple of years. Personalities and intrigue have become the order of the day instead of dealing with issues of substance. Yes, there have been slights and injustices, and I bet every member of the current council has been disappointed, angered, or hurt at one point, but focusing on those things are not only mentally destructive, they are also allowing external threats to fester and grow unchecked. One such external threat is the so-called Better Together merger plan, being pushed by the leaders of St. Louis County and the City of St. Louis, which would eliminate self-determination of the residents of Wildwood. Let me remind you, not even one of the individuals serving on the county council resides in Wildwood. Even worse, the proponents of the plan are seeking to put the measure to a vote of the entire state. This means that the good people in towns like tiny notch Missouri may determine more about the future state of Wildwood than the folks that live here. We cannot let this happen. So, colleagues, today and future council members, I implore you, please, for the sake of your constituents, make this the faction of all city leaders. I will close with another quote from John McCain. Again, liberty is taken to apply to the context of Wildwood. And this is taken from his farewell address to the Senate. "Our deliberations today, not just our debates, but the exercise of all of our responsibilities, authorizing government policies, appropriating the funds to implement them, exercising our advice and consent role, are awfully lively and interesting. They can be sincere in principle, but they are more partisan, more tribal of the time, more of the time than any other time I remember. Our deliberations can still be important and useful, but I think we'd all agree they haven't been overburdened by greatness lately. And right now, they aren't producing much for the residents of Wildwood. All sides have let this happen. Let's leave the history of who shot first to the historians. I suspect they'll find we all conspired in our decline, either by deliberate actions or neglect. We've all played some role in it. Certainly, I have. Sometimes I've let my passion rule my reason. Sometimes I made it harder to find common ground because of something harsh, I said to a colleague. Sometimes I wanted to win, more for the sake of winning than to achieve a contested policy. I hope we can, again, rely on humility, on our need to cooperate, on our dependence upon each other, to learn how to trust each other again, and by so doing, better serve the people who elected us. Let's trust each other. Let's return to regular order. We've been spinning our wheels on too many important issues because we keep trying to find a way to win without help from across the aisle. Merely preventing your political opponents from doing what they want isn't the most inspiring work. There's a greater satisfaction in respecting our differences, but not letting them prevent agreements that don't require abandonment of core principles, agreements made in good faith to help improve lives and protect the American people. As I leave my seat at the dais, I'm at once hopeful yet fearful for the city. Let's pull together council members, both old and new, mayor, volunteers, founders, residents, and stand and protect what we have built so that future generations can enjoy it, too. It has been a very great honor to serve this unique, wonderful city with all of you over these past five years. I wish each of you great wisdom, perseverance, and the best of fortune. Thank you for listening."
Thank you.
Mayor Baldwin, do you mind if I also...
Without objection from the council, we will recognize Councilmember Bartoni.
Thank you, and I promise mine will be shorter. I didn't, I didn't do anything prepared, but I did make some notes while I was sitting here. I just want to, first of all, congratulate Lauren. She did a great, great job with her campaign. She kept it very positive despite some very negative campaigning against her, and a lot of it was very personal. And she's going to be a very, very good representative for Ward 2. And I'm proud to pass the baton on to her, so to speak, and she's very smart, very energetic, and she's going to represent Ward 2 very well, and congratulations. And I want to thank the residents of Ward 2 also for supporting me. Like Greg said, it has been an honor to sit in this seat. I hope I represented everybody well. I want to thank, sorry, most of all, I do want to thank my wife. She has somehow or another watched a lot of these on livestream. And so, yeah, God bless her for doing that. But she has been very supportive of me as well, and has put up with a lot of, I guess, what we receive. And I couldn't thank her enough for that. I do want to thank the city staff, from the city administrators, Steve, Joe, Rick, everybody, and the entire council, both sitting here today and that was sitting here before also. It has been a great opportunity to work with you, and I appreciate all of your support and helping me, especially when I was new, and educating me on that. I would be remiss not to thank the city founders. Thank you for your courage and your perseverance. We all owe a debt of gratitude to that. I've reached out to many of you over the last couple of years. When I first stepped on, Ed Marshall helped me out quite a bit, and I want to thank you for that. And I've reached out to just about everybody sitting up here at one time or another, and I want to thank you for that. But my real mentor has been Ray, and I want to thank you for everything, for being there and helping me as that mentor, but also for being my friend. And one thing, Ray and I talk just about every, just about every Monday, talk about the agenda, and we talk about the agenda for about five minutes, and then we talk about sports for about 15 or 20 minutes. And I'm going to, hopefully, we will continue to do that. So, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I believe it is time for the swearing-in. So you want to, we need all of the councilmembers who were elected in this last election to please stand in front of the dais.
Councilmembers-elect, if you could please raise your right hand, you will insert your own name and recite the oath of office together. Aye?
Aye. First, to introduce my oath, say that I possess all due qualifications to travel by law for the office of Councilmember of City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, State of Missouri, the House of the Constitution of the United States, and the State of Missouri, the provisions of the Charter of the Street, and all applicable laws of the State and the ordinances and laws of the City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, State of Missouri, and faithfully convene myself by my office of Councilmember of City of Wildwood.
Okay, so real quickly before we adjourn, if Councilmember Stein and, former Councilmember Stein and former Councilmember Bartoni, if you'd please join me in front here. I would appreciate it. Okay, with that, that will take us to an adjournment of our first session, and we will reconvene in about 15 minutes. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We have refreshments and so forth outside, made by Councilmember Taylor, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Stand to adjourn. City of Wildwood for April 22, 2019. Ms. Termlinger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Giratano.
Present.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Manton.
Here.
Councilmember Gagnani.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Moving next into public participation, I'd like to mention just a few things about that before we begin. It's a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the City Council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. Interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited. And I'd like to thank everyone in advance for following these few rules. For a speaker card, please.
We have no speaker cards.
Okay, no speaker cards, all right. Moving next, before we get into mayor announcements, we have just a housekeeping agenda item. I was informed during the break that the individual we needed for the executive session that was scheduled at the last meeting is not in a position to really assist this evening. So while we could have the executive session, I've been... It has been recommended to me by both him and the city attorney that we postpone that to the next meeting. Just because apparently we couldn't do anything this evening. Councilmember... Okay, let's... We have a motion to postpone. So we have a motion to postpone by Councilmember Taylor, second by Councilmember Cutcheon, Councilmember Werther.
Quick question. Can we have... I realize this is always a delicate matter, but can we have a little more of a definitive explanation as to why, after two weeks of preparation, that tonight we're learning of the inability to deal with council or answer council questions tonight after all this time?
I'll thank you for the question. I'll defer to the city attorney, Mr. Young.
I don't know if it's necessarily an inability, because we don't know what any of those questions would be at this point, because none were forwarded for presentation and discussion. It was just a general invitation that was requested, but in a couple of weeks, we will have actual information to provide to the council.
I seem to recall Mr. Stevens having some specifics at the last time. Am I wrong, sir? Okay. I'm not wrong, okay. I didn't think so. Then, based on your statements, Mr. Young, it sounds like you're suggesting councilmembers should go ahead and direct questions to...
Okay, I would like to call it to order the second session of the City Council for the City of Wildwood for April 22, 2019. Ms. Termlinger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCoon.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Present.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Manton.
Here.
Councilmember Gagnani.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Moving next into public participation, I'd like to mention just a few things about that before we begin. It's a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the City Council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. Interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited. And I'd like to thank everyone in advance for following these few rules. For a speaker card, please?
We have no speaker cards.
Okay, no speaker cards, alright. Moving next, before we get into mayor announcements, we have just a housekeeping agenda item. I was informed during the break that the individual we needed for the executive session that was scheduled at the last meeting is not in a position to really assist this evening. So while we could have the executive session, I've been, it has been recommended to me by both him and the city attorney that we postpone that to the next meeting. Just because apparently we couldn't do anything this evening. Councilmember, okay, let's, we have a motion that trumps. So we have a motion to postpone by councilmember Taylor, second by councilmember McCutcheon, councilmember Werther.
Quick question. Can we have, I realize this is always a delicate matter, but can we have a little more of a definitive explanation as to why, after two weeks of preparation, that tonight we're learning of the inability to deal with council or answer council questions tonight after all this time?
Oh, thank you for the question. I'll defer to the city attorney, Mr. Young.
I don't know if it's necessarily an inability, because we don't know what any of those questions would be at this point, because none were forwarded for presentation and discussion. It was just a general invitation that was requested, but in a couple weeks we will have actual information to provide to the council.
I seem to recall Mr. Stevens having some specifics at the last time. Am I wrong, sir? Okay, I'm not wrong, okay. I didn't think so. Then, based on your statements, Mr. Young, it sounds like you're suggesting councilmembers should go ahead and direct questions to our defense attorney?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
How do we go ahead and get to a point then when, in two or three weeks' time, we go ahead and meet, based on assuming a postponement occurs, that we have our questions actually answered, if there has to be?
If there are specific questions you would like to pass on, you can do through me, you can do so through me, sir.
So, in case there was any confusion on that, if any member of the council has any questions, if this is postponed relative to the matter, please direct those to Mr. Young, and he will forward those on. Councilmember Stevens?
Well, I did have questions, and I had emailed to ask for information in regards to the executive session. Nothing was sent out. Mister, you know, individual is here. I just don't see why we can't meet and get an update straight from, you know, straight from him. So I don't, I don't understand why the council can't ask a few questions.
I'm not saying that you can't. I'm just saying that there is nothing to update at this point.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone, which has a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Wouldn't there necessarily be an update if I had a question, though? I mean, that would be the update.
Again, not knowing specifically what you're talking about, I don't know the answer to that. Okay, and that's fine. I understand that, but I'm just saying, you can ask the question. I'm just telling you that in terms of a communication from the position of this office to the council as far as update, we don't have any. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thanks for the question. So we have a motion to postpone. Show of hands, all in favor of postponement to the next council meeting. Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, count seven. Raise your hand again, please. You're gonna be the, you're the official counter, so you need it.
May I get a roll call vote?
Sure, we've been, any member of the council can ask for a roll call vote, roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
No, on the postponement.
Councilmember McCoon?
No.
Councilmember Boe?
No.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Abstain.
Councilmember Edens?
We just, we don't have any information, because we haven't been here to know what's already been covered and what's repetitive, so I'm an abstain.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano? Councilmember Werther?
Nay.
Councilmember Jordan?
No.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagnani?
No.
Motion fails. So we will keep the executive session later. Okay. Next, Municipal League of Metro St. Louis, I just wanted to mention for your information, I previously had a conflict relative to this for the past year on Thursday evenings. That's since been resolved. So effective as of June, I will be attending those meetings and representing the city as has been the case in the past.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember?
Just as a note for members of the public as well as council, I think everyone's pretty much aware, this coming Thursday evening at the municipal league meeting, myself have the good fortune to once again join the board of the municipal league for Metro St. Louis, and look forward to seeing you at those meetings.
Thank you. Moving into appointments, first is Mayor Pro Tem, councilmember Taylor.
This is the time for nominations, so?
It is.
I would like to nominate Joe Garitano for Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, and we have, and we have a second from councilman McGowan. And just for your information, under Roberts' rules, the way this, the voting and the process works, work, is, once a nomination is made, there will be an opportunity for that person, in this case, councilor Garitano, to make a statement, and then we will have a vote of the council, and if that passes, then that will be the person filling that position. If the motion, if that person is not accepted by the council, then it will be up for another nomination. Councilor Stevens?
Does my nomination that I had sent to council supersede the nomination that was brought forth just tonight?
No.
How's that? Because I thought in the rules that you had sent out, that you can nominate beforehand through email to the city, which I had done.
That has, that has been passed practice.
Councilor Werther, please, you now have the floor. We'll defer to the city attorney. Mr. Young, do you want to respond to that? He's wanting to know, do you have a copy of what?
I don't have the rules in front of me. Do you have them, city clerk?
Rules?
I think you do, but...
I don't think we printed anything off for that, but I do have the names of the individuals that sent emails.
Okay, thank you. Just bear with us a minute.
I'm done with it.
The way this read, when construed, this does not say who goes first, but reading it consistent with Roberts' rules of order would be that the votes would occur based upon those that were submitted by email prior to the meeting, and then those separately nominated at this meeting.
Okay, so in layman's terms, are you saying that whoever submitted an email first goes first?
Correct.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification. And so we need to know, Madam Clerk, who submitted their email first for Mayor Pro Tem?
I had Gagnani, then Garitano, then Stevens.
I'm sorry?
Gagnani, Garitano, then Stevens.
What, what were the dates on those? I believe my email was sent out on April 16th at 9:00 a.m. I never received any notice from Mr. Gagnani or Mr. Garitano, so I don't know where the nominations came from. And if they did come in, how come they weren't sent to everybody?
City Attorney Young?
The policy says that the written notice is to be submitted to the city clerk.
Okay, who makes the decision on what's submitted to the city clerk? The council does. It's just odd that we would not have received notice of who had put their name forward, so.
And he was now, he was nominating who?
Himself, and that was at 5:58 p.m.
Okay.
I have Joe Garitano on the 12th at 2:50 p.m.
And then I was the 16th at 9:00 a.m.
Uh huh, what?
16th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, so we will take, correct, City Attorney Young, Councilor Gagnani first, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and does that need a second, or is the email alone sufficient?
It does not need a second.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Councilmember Gagnani, would you like to say anything relative to your candidacy for Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, not really. I, I put my name in the hat. One of the senior members of the city government in more ways than one. However, I'm gonna make this easy for you. I'll withdraw my name from contention.
Okay, since it's already been presented to the council, it would, it's in the possession of the council, so is there any objection to Councilmember Gagnani withdrawing his nomination? Seeing no objection, it'll be withdrawn. We'll move next to councilmember Garitano, is that correct? April 12th, I believe?
Yes.
Councilor Garitano, would you like to say anything relative to your candidacy, potential candidacy for Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I have proudly served as the Mayor Pro Tem since August of last year. I love this city very much, and my goal is to do a good job representing our city wherever it is that I may go, and also when I have to fulfill the duties of Mayor Pro Tem. During my term, I did fulfill the duties at one time. From my recollection, and hopefully that of many, we had a good meeting. There was very good positive feedback I had heard from fellow council members and folks that attended the meeting in the audience or via live stream. Been part of this city for now 11 years. I served on the council since 2015, and again, my goal is to do the best that we can for our city, represent our city. So I would ask for your support, so that I can continue to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. The email from the city clerk, when it states, you know, how the nominations are done, it'll say that you'll accept nominations, you'll close the nominations, present the list of nominees, a roll call vote of each council member in attendance will then be conducted, during which council members will cast a vote of one vote by name of the office desired. So I thought we went around the room, and you just said either Garitano, Stevens, Gagnani. It was not that one council member gets forward, everyone votes on that, and then move to the next nomination. I believe from the rules that you sent, you know, we get to choose a name as we go around.
City Attorney Young?
The way it reads is consistent with the way Roberts' rules provides, which is the ordinance that we are governed by. It says that we follow Roberts' rules. It says that once the nominations are closed, you go to the first person and do a vote down the line until one person receives nine votes. And I read this consistent with that procedure.
Then what is the information that was sent out by the city clerk, where it says a roll call vote of each council member in attendance will be conducted during which council members will cast one vote by name of the council member desired for the office?
That's exactly what you'll be doing by voting i or nay on a person who's brought forward on a nomination.
No, they're not voting i or nay, they're voting by name. It says specifically in here, vote by name. It's important to know the rules for Mayor Pro Tem, I guess.
Do you want to respond to that, City Attorney Young?
Well, I will say that is inconsistent with the way it's been, it was done last year. Last year it was done similar to this way, which was consistent with Roberts' rules, which is?
No, that is incorrect.
That is correct.
No, that is.
Councilor McCoon?
Just looking at what Jessica sent, I'm just wondering where she got the information from?
Probably something we did in the past, but go ahead.
That was what was forwarded to me by Amanda. What I watched on the live stream was we did vote by name. We had the names of the individuals that presented them. Then we also, anybody that wanted to put their name in the hat, present time, and then we voted. If we couldn't come to a consolidated vote, then?
We took those one at a time, right? I mean?
We did not. We started with all, and then we ended up having to move to one at a time.
Okay, so, City Attorney Young, explain the process that we are supposed to follow.
Okay. So I stand corrected on that. What happened was, we did do it one vote, so I did not remember correctly. But after we could not get a consensus on any individual person, then we followed the Roberts' rules procedures.
So, okay, so now that history's been resolved, what, what are we, what do you, what do we do, and what's the council, so that there's clarity on what they're gonna, we're gonna put everyone's name in the mix, or the two names in the mix?
So we've got, assuming the nominations are closed, we've got two names that are currently on the list, and you go, a roll call of each person, each person names one of those two people, and if there's not nine votes for one, then we follow Roberts' rules and vote until someone gets nine votes.
Okay, and just since we've had so much controversy, should we have a motion to close nominations?
You can do that with that motion.
Okay, is there any objection to closing nominations? All right, no objection, it's closed. Okay, so, Councilmember Stevens?
May I make a statement?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, as Mayor Pro Tem, it's important to know the rules, and I'm glad that I, you know, do take the time and investigate and study these matters before we come to council, so that everybody's on the same page and we're following precedent in what we've done in the past. So I hope that this little discussion has shown that I can do that and follow the rules and, you know, make sure that the meetings are run effectively and smoothly. Also, during the State of the City, we said that we want leaders who work together on items that matter to the residents. We want to establish trust. Mr. Remy, you know, had stated, you know, no camps, and the residents want unity, and I feel like I've done that this past year. I've done that with my independent voting record. I've done that by reaching out to fellow council members for team-building opportunities, which I've met with many of you. And I've also done that by just being open, honest, and transparent with all my votes, putting them out there on social media, opened myself up to any complaints or criticisms or questions, and I've gotten great feedback from all the residents. And so I think I would do a great job as Mayor Pro Tem. I know it's mostly a figurehead position, the mayor doesn't take off often, but if you do have to have a Mayor Pro Tem to step in for multiple meetings, I do feel like I would do a great job by working together and making good decisions for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you've heard from both candidates, and we now know the process that we're following. So we will go around, you will call the roll, and councilmembers, if you will just indicate which of the two you prefer, and we'll see what happens from there.
Councilmember Stevens?
Stevens.
Councilmember McCoon?
Stevens.
Councilmember Boe?
Stevens.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Garitano.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Garitano.
Councilmember Remy?
Garitano.
Councilmember Edens?
Garitano.
Councilmember McGowan?
Garitano.
Councilmember Garitano?
Garitano.
Councilmember Werther?
Stevens.
Councilmember Jordan?
Stevens.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Garitano.
Councilmember Taylor?
Garitano.
Councilmember Dillard?
Stevens.
Councilmember Manton?
Garitano.
Councilmember Gagnani?
Mr. Stevens?
So I believe Councilor Garitano received the requisite number of votes.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Councilmember Garitano. You are again the Mayor Pro Tem.
And congrats, Joe. I'm glad we kept it in Ward Eight, so, good job.
Glad to serve. Thank you all.
Okay, moving next to council liaison to planning and zoning, can you please let us know who we have in that? My recollection is we have two remaining. Councilor Werther expressed interest first, I believe?
Correct.
And then councilmember Taylor.
Yes, now councilmember Taylor's came in after the deadline on Thursday, so does that come into play?
It means you would require a nomination from the floor.
So councilmen, it would mean he would need a nomination from the floor. Councilor McCutcheon?
I'd like to nominate Steve Taylor for the planning and zoning liaison from the council.
Okay, and I don't believe that needs a second. Doesn't need a second. So now we have Steve Taylor. So those are the only two. I would, without objection, we'll do it this way, nominations for P and Z representative from the council will be closed. Seeing no objection? Okay, same process. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McCoon?
Tim Werther.
Councilmember Boe?
Okay, Tim Werther.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Werther.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Werther.
Councilmember Remy?
Werther.
Councilmember Edens?
Taylor.
Councilmember McGowan?
Taylor.
Councilmember Garitano?
Taylor.
Councilmember Werther?
Werther.
Councilmember Jordan?
I have, would like to make just a quick comment, just because there, I don't want any questions about my answer later on. I support Tim Werther for liaison to- I support Tim Werther for liaison to planning and zoning based on his extensive background and knowledge of the planning and zoning process, and his recent commitment to myself and Councilmember Boe, that he will help maintain the three-acre minimum lot size in Ward 6. He's agreed to support the quest that John and I will have, to eliminate in Ward 6 the use of planned residential developments designed to develop homes on less than three-acre parcels, is overwhelmingly opposed by residents in Ward 6. Thank you for...
Welcome.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Taylor.
Councilmember Taylor.
Taylor.
Councilmember Dillard.
Werther.
Councilmember Manten.
Taylor.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Werther.
I'll throw in a Werther as well.
Who said that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Werther.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember Werther, congratulations. You are the, you will continue as the council's representative of planning and zoning. Next item, mayor membership, planning and zoning, just by way of background, in our city, the mayor has the option to sit as a voting member of planning and zoning. My recollection is that every mayor prior to me has done so, and I am just indicating, by placing this on the agenda, that I will also be doing that. All right. Moving next to council standing committee assignments. We have three, Edmond Public Works, Planning, Parks, Economic Development. Those have been provided. I would entertain a motion to approve those. The other, Councilmember Bertolino, seconded by Councilmember Manten. Any discussion on the motion to approve Councilmember Standing Committee Assignments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, Councilmember Stevens. Any other opposed?
I'm opposed.
Councilmember Dillard, Councilmember Jordan, and Councilmember Werther. Any other opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving next to council committee liaisons, Historic Preservation, we have two. Councilmember Edens, and Councilmember, who's taking the place of Councilmember Bartoni, actually, and Councilmember Taylor. Rural Internet Access Committee, which is Councilmember McGowan and Councilmember Jordan, and our Architectural Review Board, which is Councilmember McCutcheon. Would entertain a motion to accept those. So moved by Councilmember Remy, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, next. Board of Public Safety. As you may know, Councilmember Bertolino has served on this for a while, does an excellent job. This is actually a voting position of the council on the board. So, I would just note that. And then, on the Wildwood Celebration Commission, Councilmember Garitano. Would entertain a motion to approve those. Councilmember Stevens, seconded by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor, please, any discussion? Sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Last, ad hoc committee member replacement for Ward 3. As you may recall, Councilmember Shea was in this position. My understanding is that Ward 3 would be, the desire is to have it represented by Councilmember Remy, so I would entertain, to replace Councilmember Shea, I would entertain a motion to that effect. Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember McGowan. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Next, public hearing. Ms. Sternlinger, would you please read PZ 1-19?
PZ 1-19, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, Department of Planning, 16860 Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri. A request for the Planning and Zoning Commission's review and action on the 2018 update of the City of Wildwood's Action Plan 2007, which is a component of the city's master plan. The updated Action Plan 2007 has been under review by the Parks and Action Plan Update Committee since October 2017, and its members have acted favorably on this draft. The Action Plan 2007 establishes goals and recommendations regarding five major categories relating specifically to parks and recreation within the city of Wildwood. These categories include recreation programming, facilities, property acquisition, funding, and the town center public space. Along with these goals and recommendations, the Action Plan 2007 includes support information, supplemental factors, and assumptions for each of the major categories. The initial plan, first adopted in 2007, requires it to be reviewed and updated after its first 10 years of implementation. The draft of the plan is now being submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately, City Council for review, consideration, and appropriate action.
Thank you, Joe. Anything you would like to mention relative to PZ 1-19?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, the Planning and Zoning Commission has forwarded to you for your consideration tonight its letter of recommendation reflecting its action on the updated action plan. The action plan was first adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2007, and has been in implementation for the past 10 years. Each month, the City Council receives an update regarding the action plan and the efforts of City Council, the boards and commissions, and city personnel in implementation of the four goals and the 57 recommendations. As noted in the advertisement, after 10 years, the plan is required to be reviewed and updated in, consistent with the master plan, and in this case, a group of 11 residents, two of which were City Council members, and another, a Planning and Zoning Commission liaison, spent the better part of 2018 completing that update. The highlights of that update are identified in the letter of recommendation that's been provided for the purposes of tonight's public hearing. Suffice to say that many of the goals and recommendations remained unchanged, but there was an initiative relative to the six-acre parcel of ground that was purchased by the city in 2018 to address that and ensure that it becomes the public space that is desirous of our residents for town center area. That is the new goal, the major initiative of that group of residents. The Planning and Zoning Commission concurred and unanimously adopted the plan, as noted, on April 15, 2019. The intent of tonight's public hearing is to accept, again, public comment, as well as comments from City Council. Ultimately, the Department of Planning and Parks will request authorization to prepare a resolution that endorses and ratifies the plan by the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards?
No.
Okay. Councilmember McKeon?
First off, I was one of those residents that was on this committee, and we worked really hard, and I really appreciated city staff to kind of download everything with the city in a small amount of time. Also, the chair was here, is Mr. Garrett, that led that initiative with us as well. So, we put a lot of things together. I hope you guys had a chance to kind of dive in and look, and I think there's something attractive for every single ward that's represented, and there's some new things and some old things that we are still getting the wheel rolling. So, I support this. I think that we did a lot of work. If you have any further questions, the chair, Mr. Garrett, if he can speak, can speak further to this, but I think that we did a really good job, and I think it's well represented.
I would agree. Thank you. Councilmember Bertolino?
I just want to echo that as well, and thank you, Crystal. Mike, you're in the audience, thank you very much for your leadership over that last year. It was herding cats. We know that. It was a big effort. I want to thank also Joe and Kathy, who turned around our, all of our inputs in great order and kept us on track, and I think we did a very yeoman's job of getting it done. Thanks again, Mike, for leading us through that.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah.
Sorry, Councilmember Dodwell?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the whole committee going through this again. Parks has been one of my major goals every time that I've been here at council. Having gone to St. Louis County and tried to get some things taken care of here in the city area before we became a city, it became very apparent that we needed local representation for how we were going to handle the lands that we have within our town center, and I just want to thank the entire committee, and Mr. Garrett, and Joe, and Kathy for the work that you've done to preserve what the original intent of Wildwood's incorporation was through the parks that we have put together, and I'd like to make a motion that we accept as written.
Is that appropriate in an order at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we have a motion to accept, seconded by Councilmember Manten. Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah. Thank you, Joe, and the rest of the staff. I know it's a long task, and you turn it around really quickly when I've been on other committees, appreciate that. Thank you for being chairperson, and thanks to everybody who served on that. My one concern is, I didn't see a lot of support for the community park, and didn't seem to go along with what the long-term plan has been, and I was a little surprised by that. And I know you've worked very hard on that, Joe, but I do support the document.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
So, I just wanted to thank council, or, I guess, previous council, for updating the RFP for the six acres next door to include the action plan. I thought that was very important, whenever we start to get public input, that the work that the committee duh, has already done, does not get lost in taking public comment on, on the six acres next door, and I was really excited about trying to continue on Parks and Planning. It didn't work out, but I really hope that the subcommittee will kind of direct the, steer the conversation towards making sure that that goal number five does get accomplished next door to City Hall. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, moving into legislation.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Councilmember Stevens, we meet on the third Tuesday of the month. You're always welcome.
Bill 2466, moving into first readings, is before the council, and it concerns Ward 7. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Werther, seconded by Councilmember McKeon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2466.
Bill 2466, An Ordnance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, Amending Schedule 9 of Title III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood by Establishing No Parking Restrictions on Waterside Drive and Pier Side Lane and Authorizing the Installation of No Parking Signs by the Traffic Engineer.
Thank you. Rick, anything you would like to mention relative to Bill 2466?
I have nothing further, Mayor, but I'm available for any questions or comments.
Okay. I think we had some on that earlier. All right. Seeing none, it'll be on the agenda for the council at its next meeting. Moving to Bill 2467, it's also before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Werther, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2467.
Bill 2467, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to Execute a Contract on Behalf of the City of Wildwood with NB West Contracting Company for the Resurfacing of Various Public Streets Within the City of Wildwood, Including Traffic Control and Other Incidental Items, as Shown on the Construction Drawings and Specifications.
Thank you. In my apology, councilmembers, I said it concerns all wards. Actually, it's almost 1, 6, 7, and 8, for clarification. Rick, anything further you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2467?
I have nothing additional, Mayor, but I'm available for any questions or comments.
All right. Seeing none, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. Moving to Bill, thank you, Rick. Moving to Bill 2468, it is also before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward 1. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Greg Noni, seconded by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2468.
Bill 2468, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to Execute a Consultant Service Agreement on Behalf of the City of Wildwood with CDG Engineers, Inc., for the Preliminary Design of Three Bridges Located on Austenfort and Wildhorse Creek Roads Within the City of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, anything you'd like to mention relative to this bill?
Once again, Mayor, no, I do not, but I'm available for any questions or comments.
Any questions or comments relative to this? All right. Seeing none, it will also be on the agenda for the next meeting. And moving to Bill 2469, it is before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward 8. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Garitano, seconded by Councilmember Stevens. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposed, Councilmember McCutcheon. Any other opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2469.
Bill 2469, An Ordnance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, Authorizing Certain Modifications to Existing C-8 Planned Commercial District Ordnance Number 2414, which governs a mixed-use development located in the city's town center, downtown, and neighborhood general districts, by allowing a, for a fifth story to be added to the allowable four-story building to accommodate larger residential units, with such being consistent with the favorable action of the Planning and Zoning Commission that is set forth in its March 18, 2019, letter of recommendation on the same.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2469?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this matter was heard at public hearing two weeks ago. At the conclusion of the hearing, the City Council authorized the preparation of this legislation, and the Department of Planning is available to answer any question, or questions, and respond to comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodwell?
Does the developer need a second reading tonight, just out of curiosity?
No, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, Joe, we had some concerns previously from the other public hearing about this height. Just curiosity, I think you said before that with the addition of the fifth floor, this building is still below the level of the hotel, right? But higher than the theater. Topography-wise, what would it be from, from the Stone, from the retirement home top of that? I know the topography slopes to the south. Do you have a visual on that? Is it higher than, or less than, or the same?
It would be either equal or less than Stonecrest.
Than Stonecrest? Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Joe. Moving, that concludes first readings. Moving into resolutions, we have one. Resolution 2019-20 is before the council, and it concerns wards 1 and 3. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-20? Made by Councilmember McGowan, seconded by Councilmember Remy. Ms. Sternlinger, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-20, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, Authorizing the Acquisition of Certain Temporary Construction and Permanent Easements in Conjunction with the Construction of the Etherington Road Bridge Replacement Project within the City of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, anything you'd like to mention relative to the resolution?
I'm just briefly, Mayor, this is for Etherington Road Bridge Replacement Project. It is scheduled for 2020, not for 2019, so we won't be under construction until next year, but I'm available for any questions or comments you may have.
Any questions? Councilmember McGowan?
Rick, have you managed to get all of the easement issues worked out now with
Rick, have you managed to get all of the easement issues worked out now with the surrounding property owners?
I think the answer to that is yes. I still have a couple of property owners to get to sign on the dotted line. But based on recent discussions, I'm very optimistic that that will happen here in the next few days.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-20, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries. Okay, that moves us to the executive session. We do need, for new members of the council, we always have to have a motion to go into an executive session, and it must be by roll call. So, Councilwoman Stevens is making a motion to go into executive session, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Abstained.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Manten?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Okay. And Joe Vinnich and Mr. Cross, if you'd please join us.
Thank you.
associated with the Cox Creek and erosion issues.
It will be on the agenda, thank you. Anything else? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. May be Councilwoman McGowan, seconded by Councilmember McKeon. Non-debatable, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
I hold all your water back.